Any agenda additions or deletions from staff first?
Staff has none, Mr. Chairman.
How about the board of members?
None for me?
I have none.
Minutes from last meeting will be postponed till the following meeting. Next is election of officers, and Tim, do you want to... who are we going to have do that? Is our legal counsel Peggy here? Who's responsible here? Who chairs the meeting while we...
Sure, if we can go ahead and get some nominations for the chair.
I nominate Larry.
Second.
Any other nominations for chair? Sherri, do you want to...
If there's no other nominations, he is appointed chair.
Congratulations, Mr. Lauffer.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You can now chair the...
It's a courtesy and an honor to serve with this group, thank you.
You can now chair the vice chair nomination.
Vice chair nominations, okay. I'd like to open that for nominations.
I'd like to nominate Honey Manous.
I would like to second that nomination. Seeing no other nominations, I'm going to move that it's accepted as motioned and nominated. You're now reelected also.
Thank you all very much.
We're all getting raises this year, you know. Next thing, we're open to the public, is public comment. Would anybody from the public like to speak at this time on any issue? Or you can wait till your agenda item may come up if you'd like to. And the next one is a public hearing. This is a quasi judicial. And the site application is submitted by Schulke, Biddle &amp; Stoddard LLC to allow the construction of a Go Line Transfer Hub facility with a 1,752 square foot building and a 4,600 square foot covered shelter located at 1225 16th Street. And the number on this one is SP 15-000014. And Tim, or who's going to handle it? No?
Are there any ex parte communications?
Oh, any... I'm going to go back and catch that, okay. Disclosure by planning and zoning board members. Have any ex parte communications, if any, please speak?
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
I have to say that for the past seven years, I've been deeply involved with the Go Line Bus Hub, to say the least. I had attended every meeting that has to do with this location. And I probably was very adamant in making sure that it moved from original town to the present location and now to this location. So I must just disclose that I do have had, I have had a lot of input in this location.
I have none. Any additional? Okay.
I don't know if this matters. I don't think it does, but I had questions for staff prior to this.
You don't have to disclose them.
I didn't think it did, but I wanted to get it on the record. Thanks.
Swearing in of the applicant, staff, and all witnesses by the city clerk?
Anyone that's going to testify, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Any exhibits, please bring them to the city clerk. Now staff presentation.
As the chairman stated, this is the, the applicant is proposing the construction of the main Indian River County Senior Resource Association Go Line Transfer Hub. And this is going to include 1,752 square foot enclosed and open air building to provide shelter, bathrooms and storage, eight bus transit vehicle pickup parking spaces, paved and secured parking for clients and operators, and covered shelter. And attachment A of this report provides the project description and fact sheet. And I just wanted to point out, on the attachment A, under the owner, it's Indian River County is the leasing and the city of Vero Beach is the owner. And this site is zoned industrial, and it's also designated industrial in the future land use map. And the property is located on the south side of 16th Street, east of the railroad tracks. And it is to the north of the city's 17th Street Storage Yard. This project meets the definition of a major site plan and requires planning and zoning board approval. And Section 64.10 requires that all approved site plans and amendments to site plans meet certain pertinent review, performance, and development standards. And in particular, we looked at compliance with the comprehensive plan transportation element. And Policy 3.5 in the transportation element in the comprehensive plan states that the city shall continue to support Indian River County in its authorization and provision of public transit services throughout the urban area. And we find that the site plan is compliant with Policy 3.5. And the site plan, compliance with all development regulations was reviewed by the planning department, public works department, and all other applicable departments. Indian River County Traffic Engineering Division determined that the Go Line Transfer Hub would not require a traffic study. The proposed site plan meets all the height, open space setback requirements and stormwater management standards with the following exceptions. The Planning and Development Director determined that the hedge that is typically required adjacent to the, on the property to the east wasn't going to be required because it's the railroad track there. And also, there's extensive landscaping in the 16th Street right of way, which could be used as the northern landscape buffer. The applicant is also proposing fences between five to eight feet in height, which does require approval by the planning and zoning board if they can demonstrate the need, that they, they need the fences higher. And along 16th Street, they're proposing a five-foot-tall, black-clad vinyl chain-link fence. And on the east side, it's proposed to be an eight-foot-tall, galvanized steel fence. And on the west side, it is between five to six feet tall, black vinyl clad chain-link fence. On the south side of the property, there is an existing, I believe it's an eight-foot-tall fence already. And staff finds that the site plan is compliant with all of the provisions of the land development regulations, with the proviso that the planning and zoning board approves the requested fence heights. And with Section 64.10B, we found that the Go Line Transfer Hub is in appropriate use along the heavily traveled 16th Street corridor. And the proposed layout of the driveways and parking creates no safety hazards and should not have any adverse effects on adjacent properties. And we find that it's compliant with Section 64.10. And based on the above analysis and findings, staff is recommending, the staff finds that the site plan application meets all the provisions for the site plan approval and recommends approval of the site plan subject to the conditions listed in your memo.
Do you plan on calling any witnesses? No?
No, I do not.
Okay. And the applicant, recommending Schulte?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You've been sworn in, would you please give us your name? Thank you.
Jeff Barquette with Schulke, Biddle &amp; Stoddard, 1717 Indian River Boulevard, and I have been sworn in. This is my partner Joe Schulke's project. I was helping him out a little, and somehow I'm here. And he's out of town.
I understand.
So if I can answer any questions, I'd be more than happy to. And hopefully I can have staff assist me on that also. But I have no presentation.
Okay.
Be happy to try to answer any questions, though.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. North, south, east, and west. I'm looking at the fold-out map on here, and there's a graphic scale which shows where north is on the compass, on the top.
Gotcha.
Okay. Does that apply to the map that I have over here?
I hope so. Some of our draftsmen get fancy with the north arrows.
The reason I got so confused is because I see where the railroad tracks are to the west side of the property.
Sure.
And that would rotate this map around.
It's east side.
Well, excuse me, I believe it is correct. North is up on this. The railroad tracks are to the right.
Don't the tracks run north and south?
Yes, ma'am. So they run parallel to the right-hand side of it, which would be the east.
Okay.
But I agree with you, that north arrow, I don't like it either.
Okay. If we're facing north, aren't the tracks on the west side?
No, it's, we're on the, we're on the east side. Parks Rental is directly across from it, directly to the north, on the other side of the road, on the other side of 16th.
Yes.
So the tracks are on your right, which would be your east.
It's a vacant piece of ground, right?
I'm sorry?
It's a vacant piece of ground.
It is. Yes, sir.
So it's east, okay.
Ms. Manous, I understand what you're saying with the way it's presented on the page for people looking in. It is confusing.
It is.
The way you have your drawing. Whoever drew it, it's confusing.
Gotcha.
So the tracks are running north and south, and this is to the east?
Correct. The tracks are on the east side.
Okay. So when we reference, for instance, this landscape buffer that Gail had just been reading, was that to the east or west side?
No, that would be the east side, right next to the railroad tracks and if I can point, or maybe you can...
Yeah, the buffer is along 16th, which is north of the property.
Gail, that mouse will reach over to him. The tracks to the east. Reach over to him.
They're recommending...
It's right next to the computer. You can, that will reach over to the microphone.
Right here, if you can see my mouse hand up there?
Yes.
That's the existing 16th Street vegetated buffer, which we're proposing, of course, to leave completely alone. And then right here, which is over on the right or the east side, are the railroad tracks. And that is where we are going to plant the canopy trees, but not the hedge.
May I just interrupt?
Yes, ma'am.
Above the site plan, there's, it says FEC right-of-way, R-O-W, and then you have a bunch of Rs to indicate the track. Is that not, I mean, this is what was very confusing to me.
No, it says "to" right-of-way, I think, isn't it?
Yes.
Three feet, two...
Hundred and three feet, hundred and three feet to the right-of-way.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
You need a magnifying glass.
But then I see the diagram there with the R, and I'm not sure, RR, isn't that railroad tracks?
It is.
But it indicates it that it's hundred and three feet away. Thank you. That had me absolutely confused. Now I'm orientated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're just losing your mind. You haven't lost it yet, sir.
My magnifying glass needs to be bigger. Thank you very much.
She's always, she'll catch everything, I'm going to tell you that.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chair? Mr. Engineer? When you enter complex, you come in off the side street there? When you come in, like, how does it work with the traffic flow inside? Because there's no little arrows, like, sometimes when you look at plans, they show the little arrows on the plan?
It's an automatic gate, first of all, when you come in.
On both sides?
On our side and for Public Works to go all the way through the site. And there's another gate on the backside, which would be the south side. And that's right, here would be off the main road.
So there's a gate there?
I'm sorry?
There's a gate?
There's a gate, automatic. And then right here, there's another gate to get back to Public Works' storage or whatever back there.
That's not for your buses?
No, that's correct. That's purely for...
City.
City. You got it. Yes, sir. And then the circulation is merely just, it's kind of odd how it looks there, but the buses pull in to the...
Could you show what your little arrow point, like, if a bus was coming in?
There's only one arrow down here at the bottom. So they come in, hang a left, and then pull into the little spots, which there should be eight of them.
Yes.
And they don't completely pull in, but they pull in so other buses can pass. And then they don't have any backup movements. You know how the buses come in, almost to the front, then hang a left and go on out?
Yes.
And then loop around and keep on going. Pretty much.
Just, so it's clear in my mind, each time you have a bus come in, your gate opens, it's not going to stay open?
Not 100% sure on that, but I believe that's correct. Yes, sir.
And the vehicular traffic from the public, how do they enter through that same gate?
I don't know if vehicular traffic from the public is going to be allowed in there. It's just a transfer hub, only...
There's actually no required parking for the site, but they did provide 16 parking spaces.
I assumed that was for the public, I didn't know that.
It's, I think, for operators.
Right.
Forgive me, employees, personnel.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Man, so it's not public parking, and they have a bicycle rack? That would be when the folks come in, they could put their bicycles on a rack there?
Yes and no.
Is that the idea?
And it's required also.
All right, so it's not like if you wanted to ride your bicycle to the complex, you could go into the complex and pick up a bus and leave your bicycle there?
I don't think its main intention is for that, no, sir. It's purely a transfer hub.
Got it. Thanks.
So nobody, you don't initially start your...
You don't.
At this location?
No, you don't.
But can you?
I think you can, yes.
There's no entry without a key, with some kind of a pass. If you came by vehicle, only if you walked then, could you possibly walk in then and pick up a transfer there? Is that correct?
That's, yeah, can you walk in there?
Just a second, don't we have a...
I don't think so.
No.
My problem is, I didn't understand the full definition of a hub. Some hubs, you can initiate your transportation there. Other hubs are just for the vehicles themselves, and some are combinations, and I didn't...
That isn't, that's not the intent. It's not a park-and-ride or anything like that, and its location, not that somebody couldn't possibly do that, but I don't see that happening.
Correct. And again, I'm sorry, I'm not 100% up to date on this. But that's not the main intent of this site at all. It's for all of them to come together, and there will be transfers within the buses that come and go, and then they go back out on their, whatever their next destination is.
And the proposed building there is for them to be under shelter and et cetera while waiting for the, or is that for administrative uses?
Yes, both of those. Restrooms, and there's storage areas and sitting areas.
And then there's those seating areas that are out around the peripheral, so if you want to wait for your bus.
Correct. And there's some inside also.
Okay. I think I understand.
Will the buses stay there overnight?
No, I don't believe they are. They've got another area where the buses will stay.
Yeah, they go to the maintenance yard over on 43rd and between north and south Gifford Road.
And back to having the automatic gate when the buses enter. If it's an automatic gate and it closes each time the bus goes in, when the buses, bussers are coming up to the gate, are they going to have a device in the bus that opens the gate so they don't have to wait out into the traffic?
Well, they won't be in traffic. There's plenty of turnoff there. And by the way, on that subject, we already have the county right-of-way permits for this project. And I'm not 100% sure if it's bus-activated, like your garage clicker, or if it's something in the road or on the bus.
It says, it has a, it's not a transponder, it's got a keep pad that says on here, that'd be my guess is.
But they'll have a clicker in their car?
I would imagine that would be the...
That's my guess, I don't know.
But don't make that work, if they can't get in, there's a problem.
The keep pad is more for the city's use.
Yes.
To come and go through there.
It's not noted on here, the distance from the right-of-way to the gate. Do we have a measure of what that distance is? I don't think, I think there's plenty of room for more than one bus to be there. So it wouldn't block, if they had to hesitate to open the gate, it wouldn't block any traffic. No, here, this distance here. The gate is here. That's across.
It has to be at least a minimum of 75. But hopefully it's in.
Well, yeah, to the road, yeah, it's probably about 75.
About 75 feet? It's not, it, it's just not noted on the, on the design, that's all?
No.
But that's plenty.
Jeff, I have a question for you then.
Yes, sir.
Is inclusive in today's approval or rejection, are you looking to include the fence requirements and the landscaping, exceptions within that, that will be part of that?
Please, yes.
The landscaping is actually the planning director.
Okay, he'll make that individually, not the board.
You have to do the fences that are over the certain height limits.
Okay. Okay, so that's the exception here.
And if I can expand just a hair on the fence thing, yes, it is eight feet. But it's eight feet, so it matches more or less everything, because it's on partial slope of, you know, of retention swell over there, too. So it's not completely eight feet from finished grade.
Okay.
It is a slope down.
For an industrial area. I don't officially have a comment on the building itself, but I thought it looked pretty decent.
The diagrams that show with a walkway and without a walkway, the purpose of that is...
From the last page?
Yeah, the second map.
That's just different elevations from different angles.
Do you intend to have a walkway there?
I'm sorry?
Is the intent to have a walkway there?
Absolutely, there's a walkway all the way around, covered walkway.
Jeff, a question I have of you then. I know Joe's not here, but is Joe just, is he representing the county? Is the city involved? I don't understand the relationship. The city owns the property, but the county is the one involved in the Go Line, and they're responsible, is that correct?
Right. The way it is, the city, they have a lease agreement, Indian River County, with the city. So we have a lease agreement here, I've got a copy of it. And basically, they contract with the Go Line, to T, as the, so they're contracted with them to provide the service, but the actual tenant, meaning the people with the lease, is Indian River County.
So our city has already signed off on the concept?
Oh, they've already done that.
I'm saying this out loud for my own...
Exactly. So you have the typical identification, all the requirements of any kind of leaseholder that's in there.
That's behind us.
So it's way beyond, you know what I mean? There's a lot more than you're dealing with a site plan, that a lot of things are taken care of in that lease agreement.
I wanted to make, just clarifying it from, I think that was what it meant.
Yeah, the lease was executed in 2013, and it runs until 2053. And it also has a couple of 10-year terms for renewal, so it's a long-term lease.
But the city's no longer involved, other than the lease or of this property, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. And the county is the leasing.
Yes.
And the Go Line is a subsidiary of the county or a subcontractor?
Right. And there's a provision in the lease that allows the county to assign the lease to the, to the subtenant.
Okay.
Or if not that particular subtenant, if another subtenant should ever arise, they could assign the lease.
If we change companies, we, go ahead.
But the intent would be that it remains a hub for something that would be called Go Line?
And is its use limited to this particular, within that lease, is the use limited to this purpose? Or is it generic with the zoning?
During the term of this agreement, tenants shall use the premises for a transit hub and other like and associated uses, but for no other purposes.
Okay.
Does the lease include a right-of-way for the city to access its property in the rent?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very specific about that.
Ken, you have something?
Yeah, well, since you were on the, who's leasing, it's Indian River County that leases the Go Line, they're the sublease. Now, the Go Line, to my understanding, is under the Senior Resource, which is a 501(c).
Right.
And there's no charges for the rides. First of all, is there any fee that the city is charging per month for the lease? Or is it like our typical $1 a month leases?
I think it's a bit more than that, but not much.
It's like $25, is that a month or a year? It's in here.
You don't have to go through and look, that's, that's close enough. So basically, the city is actually stepping up to the plate to help out with the transportation situation with the Senior Resource Center, which is the 501(c). Let's say for the sake of argument, they no longer will be in the Go Line business in 10 years, for whatever reason. Can the county rent it out to a profit-making company that does bus services?
Is that a site plan question, though?
It says, this says tenant shall be permitted, tenant, who is the county, shall be permitted to assign, sublease, or transfer any part of this agreement with prior written consent of landlord, that's the city.
That answers that.
To the SRA, which is what you was referring to, or tenant's then-current transit provider or community transportation coordinator upon notice to landlord.
Okay.
So you have a lot of protection, the city has a lot of say-so in all of that.
Okay. That takes care of me.
But it tries to cover every eventuality in case SRA is no longer in place.
And since we're on the subject, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
On the pages that I had concerns with when I spoke with our city staff, where it had owner on page one, we had the general information, I'd like to change where it takes, it says owner is Indian River County. I made myself clear with staff to put, it's a lease. Then also on the application, it said property owner, Indian River County, they're not the owner, they're leasing it. And also, there's down at the bottom of page one of five on your application, it says a letter of authorization may provide, and it talks about a property owner's signature that also needs to be changed, it's the leasing, okay? So that was the areas that I found, and staff agreed that that would be taken care of, which was good for me over the phone.
That was, okay.
Well, we did mention that, started the meetings, you know, to bring it up, I mean, I don't think, I'm sorry, I just wanted, but we...
I know you did your job, it's on the record, it's all covered. You did, nice, thank you.
Are they in here now, as you had, are they incorporated now?
Not this, like, on this, but they will be.
Well, it's, it's a staff report. I mean, we can, you know, it's, the record's been set here already at the hearing. I mean, if you want us to go change it for posterity, we can go and make those changes. I don't have a problem with it.
I'm okay. I mean, they said they would take care, I'm just putting it on the record so folks know staff was, they said they would take care of it.
Well, certainly the development order will be very clear on what's that, okay? And we have to, we have to write a development order to go with this for the signature by the chair, so.
I don't have a question, just an observation, getting back to the gate. Up to the right of where the gates are, it says that it's an automatic sliding gate that will be open during normal business hours. So it appears that the buses will be able to just pull right in, they won't be standing out there. It will be open during normal business hours. And under that is a implication of a gate operator with the location to that. So it appears to me that there will be a gate operator there that will be taking care of the gates, and that there will be nothing for the buses to have to control to stand out into traffic. So it's just an observation, I just saw that there and wanted to bring that to the attention.
Yeah, I don't know if that gate operator is a mechanical thing, I don't think it's a person, but I think you're, you're on the money, the gate will be open during that time, so that's very...
I needed to magnify the glass over here to see it all better.
I mean, I'd, but that's, that's, yeah, to make it easy.
Right. When you're talking about something that's gated, you're talking about security. Is there any other consideration that needs to come in? For instance, I don't know, input from the police department, anything like that? Okay.
I think it's pretty well-covered in the lease and what they have to do. And we're certainly aware, they have obligations to do that. And of course, it's in their self-interest. I mean, if they're going to have improvements done to that property, you certainly don't want to have people going in there and messing around with the bathrooms and everything else on that property.
Yeah, think about, like, the homeless.
Yes, and that's the concern.
Fence is up, though, too.
Yeah, but it'll be secured, I mean...
Well, and also with that, with, with the fencing, which, you know, I'm glad that they're doing that, people get in there, they'll ride on the buildings, you know, there'll be the standard, you know, gang riding. And that was on, there's a rental storage area that's east of the tracks. And periodically, they'll go through and hit the walls pretty bad on there.
Yeah.
So it's good that they have the fence. On fencing, and this is a question for the planning director, is it possible that all On fencing, and this is a question for the planning director, is it possible that all visible fencing, and I know there's some there that you will not see, instead of using the galvanized, that it be the black vinyl clad? Because on the east side, you're not going to have any bushes at all, the high defense, and the fence, like the engineer said, it will be eight foot, but there's a swell there, but you still will see that from the road, and I think the black actually will be a little bit more camouflage, and I feel since it's, it's a fairly nice-looking building from what I can tell, and I think on the outside, instead of having it look like some type of a prison or a holding cell area and chain-link the galvanized makes that look, if it's not that much more, just do the vinyl, the black looks, it's kind of camouflaged. So I'd like that to possibly happen, you know, where you see it.
I know what you're talking about, I'm sorry, and it is a cost thing. That was a sort of a value thing. Definitely the vinyl clad in the front and on the west side. If at all doable, of course, the applicant would like to go minimize costs and keep it there.
Well, yeah, aesthetics for our city, again, it's gonna be a very long fence.
Right.
You really don't have any shrubbery along that railroad corridor, and you already know that. I just think, because you have other buildings there that have gone up in the area that are pretty decent, and to set a nice tone, to keep it kind of nice, I think even if they could only just do it maybe half the way to the south with the, with the black, maybe go that route, and that's a compromise, because, you know, to have it look halfway decent.
And hopefully, if okay, maybe we could work with it.
Just go halfway.
Yeah, well, we could put, to encourage them to look at doing that, because I don't think we can, you really got a lot of room to, you know, it's against a railroad track, it's an industrial area, but we could put that as a suggestion, that they would look at that.
And also, along the lines, think like this, is we've had problems with that rental building there, where they've had the gang riding and all. If you put up something halfway decent, it actually deters some of those folks coming in, because it doesn't look so heavily industrial. Like, when you go to the south here, you see the chain-link fences along the railroad tracks. It looks yucky. This looks like, hey, we do care, we're gonna keep it up, we're keeping an eye on the place. Kind of sends that, that message out there. So hopefully, we can do that.
Additional questions of the applicant?
I have one more traffic.
Is there, you have no additional, you had no reports, so there's no additional rebuttals on it?
Okay, we're moving forward then, okay.
I think, Mr. Dick.
Right. I was curious, a traffic study or an analysis wasn't required. Could you explain?
I'm not a traffic engineer, but there's actually a net reduction in traffic, because obviously, the people are riding the bus, and it's completely the county's call on traffic, it's their road. None was required, we were happy.
Okay. That's...
Technically, I don't know why.
Okay.
Additional questions?
No, no, that's not the county's road, is it? 16th?
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
16th Street.
We had to get a right-of-way permit from them, which we have, to do the work out there.
16th, that's a county road?
Yeah, I think 17th, from the railroad tracks to the east is DOT, from the railroad tracks to the west is county. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why they have the landscaping from it.
Exactly.
Additional questions? We'll release the applicant, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the, anybody here would like to speak now on this particular issue? If you would, please come forward. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll immediately close. Any closing statements by the staff?
I just wanted to make it clear what we were, the applicant was looking for was fence along 16th Street of five feet in height, on the east, eight feet in height, and on the west, between five to six feet in height.
I understand everybody, okay?
I understand.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Jeff, you'd like to say?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. Is the planning, planning and zoning board have any discussion you'd like to make on this? Go ahead, Ken.
I asked the P&amp;Z director on, let's see, what page you have, page three, findings and recommendations. When the site work begins there, when they begin the construction there for this complex, will it be fenced off, you know, with the standard construction fencing to keep folks out on the property? And my other question, the follow-up question with that, do we require here in the city, when they begin the construction, number one, to have the construction-type fencing, and that's like a standard six-foot chain-link fence, and on areas, most of the time, you'll see that green screen cloth that's put up to shield it, you know, sand coming out or whatever, or the nastiness that goes on with construction. I noticed here throughout the city, we do have some construction projects going on where they have the chain-link fence put up, but they only have some of the green cloth put up, and the rest of it's not covered. Then we have other construction sites in the city where the green cloth, they put the fence up and the green cloth goes all the way around. So I was wondering with this, if we could, with the findings and recommendations that we put on there, that they put up the standard construction-type fencing, and I call it a green cloth. I don't know if there's a particular term.
Well, I think the engineers stated that they will be following the typical construction standards, meaning they will have a fence up.
Will it have the green cloth?
Whether they have a green cloth up.
Or brown cloth, whatever.
Well, that gets into, we don't have construction regulations.
I don't know, do we have regulatory power over that as a support? Do we have regulatory power over that as a support? I don't think so.
I don't think so.
That's a construction thing with building permits and et cetera, and safety.
Yes, but, I mean, we could suggest to them to do that, just like we're doing with the vinyl.
All right, so, even if, so it's clear in my head, even under the finding and recommendations, you, as a city, would require, you say, well, we want a construction fence put up, and then let's just use the green cloth, and we like green cloth on two sides of it to keep the site covered. We can't require that.
Well, I think we're getting into the construction requirements, and we don't have any, I don't have any land development regulations to do that, where the building code has that.
Let me make a comment if I can, because I'm in this particular area, okay? If something is occurring that's negative, then the building department would come in and say, you're causing dust. You're causing debris to fly away. If they're not, then they, you don't have to put up defenses for things that may not be need-defense. It's when you violate the rules that are out there. Some people put that up in preemptive of having that, or other people do it as reactive, and some people just get away with not doing it at all.
And that's, that's a good point, because a lot of times, at one, securing equipment on site, that's why you got the fence up.
Their safety, their insurance.
Keeping people from getting on the site.
Right.
And we have closed down, I mean, our code people have, for instance, we had a development up on A1A where there was a lot of dust, and they, and the building stepped in on that.
And that's where it's handled, not on that board.
At this, not at this level, no.
And it's only those people that are doing something inappropriately that usually get... Additional comments?
None.
Are we ready for a call for a vote, then?
Motion.
Motion, I'm sorry. I guess we have to have a motion.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation.
What kind of, what kind of, you don't help me at all! We have a motion. He moved.
It moved it, and it was seconded. Now we can call for the vote.
Do we want the added suggestion to the applicant of the black vinyl fence on the east side and the green shield cloth?
It was not in the motion.
Okay.
No.
Therefore, I believe it's not in the motion, so therefore, we'll vote on that one first.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mrs. Hillman?
Yes.
Mr. Crotto?
Yes.
Mrs. Manous?
Yes.
Mr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Passes five to zero.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thanks, you too.
The next thing I'm gonna discuss is my annual report. Does anybody want to comment how well I did?
Yeah, I think you're amazing. But I do think we do need to amend something.
You can't have fun, right?
Uh-oh.
Oh, actually, not amend, just maybe qualify it.
Oh, no.
On the 455 Gray twig.
Oh, I've got, what I'll do is I'm gonna be reversed by city council on appeal.
They granted the appeal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's why I put a December 7th ape, because I knew I had to make some updated revisions.
It's a busy year. I think you commented about that, lady, yeah.
You're right. I'm surprised how many things we actually handled when that one reviewed over, it was, it really, we did handle quite a few things.
On the very last item, Tim, that application has been withdrawn. Is there any new information on that at all?
Basically, we've entered into an agreement with, and they agreed to withdraw the application. I told them at the time, based on the hearing we had, they lost my support, but that wasn't probably what did it. I think it was clear, based on the testimony that, at that meeting, that that was gonna be, they would have a difficult time getting approval, and I think, but the city, we felt we wanted to enter, because we felt that the city had some responsibility. They were not hiding there, they had signs out all this time.
Right, yeah.
So it's gonna either, we're gonna either win this court, court case, or not. I did tell them, we would look at maybe some other way we could do it without really attacking, you know, having to go through rezoning process, there are some ways to do it. Whether that's gonna be politically acceptable in the process, I can't, I can't guarantee anything, but that's what we agreed to, so we've given them additional time in that situation.
The neighborhood is not anti...
No, and that's the whole thing. That was the, the other thing, that the neighborhood wasn't against what they were doing, they were concerned about...
Future.
The future, what could happen, and, you know, and that was very clear at that hearing. So I think that was, that worked out for the best.
And it seemed like there was a good resolution, you know, the neighbors.
Yeah, it's fair, and the neighbors, you know, as I said, if the neighbors had been openly against this thing, that had been another thing, but clearly, they, they were just openly against the fear of the unknown and the future.
I think, I think what's important is that we make, you know, we're not going against the short-term rental ordinance that we have. That's highly significant.
No, it's still not a, still not a legal use until we can get this all taken care of.
Yeah.
All right?
Thank you.
Is there any additional comments on the annual report?
No, we accept it and forward it to the town, city council. Do we need a motion?
Is that a motion? Do we want a motion on that? We do? You just made a motion, thank you, Don, yes. We have a second on Don's motion?
Second.
We have a second.
Unanimous. We don't need a vote on that.
You don't, we don't need to, I thought we said we did.
Voice, just voice.
Voice, yes.
Yes.
Everyone in favor?
Yes. Unanimous.
Okay.
So my last, my last item I have is my Christmas present to you, we're gonna cancel the meeting on the 17th.
Oh, thank you. I accept it.
I noticed the council wasn't meeting, I wondered if we were going to.
That's because he's going on vacation now. Thank you. I shouldn't look a gift horse in the mouth, right? Thank you.
We should everybody next year now.
That's right. It won't be till...
We'll see y'all next year.
Yeah.
Is there anything other, that's it, you have, Tim? Is that all?
Well, you got me in the barrel. Do you have anything?
Board member matters? Are there any board member matters?
You know, on the, again, I just really need to thank you for sending the quasi-traditional things that have been pending or under staff review.
It is helpful.
Yeah, very helpful. The Christ by the Seas, they're converting that? You're still working on that?
They're, they're still, they're still on that, yes.
Okay.
Any additional board matters?
No, just thanks, thank Tim for all his work.
Yes, I would like to do that also.
For being in the barrel.
Yeah, thank you. And I would like to make one thank you also. Last week, we welcomed Norm on board, I was glad he's here, but we'd also like to thank Robin Polinsky's service, for her service here on this board. She was a nice addition to our board and very helpful, and we'd like to thank her publicly.
Very, yeah.
And I'd like to have Mr. Cahoy officially excused from our meeting, and with that, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I wish that we have a very successful next year. Thank you, and I think we're adjourned.
Thank you.